The next presentation is a first look at the recommended fiscal year 2627 Capital Improvement Plan. As you know, this is the time of year we begin to project what our needs will be in the capital plan arena for the next fiscal year. And the team works to analyze current needs, current allocations for funding in each of the areas, roofing, mechanical, transportation, technology, and so on, and forecast our needs and budgetary asks for the upcoming fiscal year. Lenny, Richard will present.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today I will share our capital improvement plan for FY 2627. Each year, the Board reviews and approves a capital improvement plan that outlines the anticipated funding need for the maintenance and enhancement of our facilities, as well as allocations for transportation and technology infrastructure. While the CIP is funded annually, internally, we take a comprehensive approach to its development. This includes reviewing our long-term plan that spans the next 10 years. This strategic outlook allows us to maintain and prioritize list of upgrades, renovations, and improvements, scheduling in them as funding allows, and exploring the potential use of bonds to meet these needs. Although our plans and requirements may evolve annually with new CIPs, this long-term vision helps ensure we stay focused on keeping our buildings in optimal condition for effective teaching and learning. Today, we will be providing a brief summary of the division's enrollment, then our meals tax projects, and a summary of how those funds have been allocated in recent history. After that, I will touch on the impacts of inflation and how those impacts have influenced our allocation requests this year. As has been shared previously with the Board, the division's preliminary enrollment shows a total student count of 49,008 students. This is a nearly 400-student decrease from school year 2425. All of the high schools are under 100% functional capacity after A-Center programming is accounted for on both Day 1 and Day 2. More detailed information about the preliminary enrollment is available on Board Docs under the October 9 meeting, and final enrollment reports will be available next month. The Meals Tax has been a vital source of funding supporting Henrico County Public Schools since its inception, providing an additional revenue stream for facility improvements, renovations, and major capital projects across the division. We remain grateful to both the School Board and Board Supervisors for this funding to help maintain our facilities. To date, we have completed 462 critical infrastructure projects across all schools using about $96.7 million. Without Meals Tax funding, these safety upgrades and other facility improvements would not be possible. The funding has been used for projects such as vestibule entry installations, camera system replacements, gym floor replacements, bathroom upgrades, carpet replacements, lighting upgrades, and parking lot improvements. Meals Tax funding is also covering a portion of the Tuckahoe Auditorium addition. Another aspect of the Meals Tax projects are additional safety upgrades. While we do not disclose safety and security plans, there are additional upgrades for our schools that will require an estimated $10 million in funding over the course of three years. As we'll get into our next slide, the current allocation of Meals Tax funds will not be available to cover these additional safety upgrades along with deferred maintenance projects. This chart provides a comprehensive summary of the year's HCPS has received Meals Tax funding. As shown, over the past seven years, the full $9 million allocation was received only three of those years. In the three years with $0 balance in the amount column, FY 20, 21, and 25, funds were redirected to support major capital projects, including the new Tucker High School, the new Highland Springs High School, and the new Davidson-Longan Elementarys. During those years, no deferred maintenance projects were completed, resulting in project delays in approximately, delays of approximately two or three years. In the current FY 26, about $3.7 million of the funds from the Meals Tax were redirected to assist with the Virginia Randolph project, resulting in only 5.3 being available for deferred maintenance projects. As we evaluate current and future capital needs, I would like to take this opportunity to look at how inflation continues to affect the cost of our projects over time. This chart illustrates how inflation has impacted the previously allocated funds for key initiatives. For example, the $9 million Schools Meals Tax reserves established in 2014 would be equivalent to $12.3 million in 2025, a 37.5 increase due to inflation. Playground replacement costs have risen from $250,000 to $305,000 per site since 2024, reflecting a 22% increase. School bus replacement costs have grown significantly, with the price per diesel bus increasing from $132,000 in 2022 to $171,000 in 2025, a 29.1 increase. Our schools operate more than 500 HVAC systems containing over 8,000 mechanical components. For 24 years, the facilities teams manage all HVAC plumbing, electrical, and roofing repairs with an annual budget of just $2.5 million. Each year, we partner with Mosley Architects and their mechanical engineering team throughout, through our annual contract to evaluate the condition of our HVAC systems. Together, we develop a prioritized list of mechanical projects based on system age and repair frequency, ensuring both immediate and long-term needs are addressed. While age and performance issues are both considered, our top priority remains resolving the most critical concerns first, even when they occur before age-based replacements are due. This fiscal year, FY 26, saw a significant and much appreciated increase in the mechanical-only allocation. This has enabled HCPS to complete critical infrastructural projects over the last year. This year, we are requesting an increase to reflect the long list of critical needs, as well as adjusting for inflation. Our previous mechanical list identified 72 projects at approximately $57 million. However, we are currently working with Mosley to conduct a revised assessment of critical mechanical needs across all of our schools. This CIP request includes $15 million to begin addressing these identified mechanical projects and to complete necessary repairs. I would also like to mention, in addition to CIP funding, HCPS has invested $28.7 million to help close prior funding gaps for mechanical improvements across the division. These efforts have been supported through ESER funds, COVID recovery funds, and Meals Tax revenue to tackle the most urgent needs. Replacing aging school roofs is essential to maintaining safety, structural integrity, energy efficiency, and health standards, aesthetics, and compliance. We are grateful for the substantive increase in funding for roofing projects this past year. For the coming fiscal year, we are requesting the roofing allocations be maintained at the same level. This $6 million request enables us to proactively address roof concerns, ensuring our schools remain safe, functional, and supportive learning environments for years to come. Adopted a few years ago, last year's $2 million technology commitment in the capital improvement plan allowed us to continue our large-scale technology initiative, equipping HCPS classrooms with innovative next-generation display technologies, particularly in those that previously lacked them or had outdated systems. Over the past five years, we've successfully added 2,876 new Promethean panels to classrooms in Henrico Schools. At this, at that transformational project near its completion, steady funding will permit us to continue replacing and enhancing our critical instructional technology infrastructure. Last year's CIP included essential funding for bus replacements. We have capitalized, we have utilized CIP and ESER funds over the past five years to purchase 318 new buses equipped with seat belts and climate control. These investments have helped lower the average age of our bus fleet and reduce both fuel and repair costs. Additionally, the improved driver workspaces in the new buses, featuring climate control and technology upgrades, will enhance the effectiveness and efficiency of our transportation department. From the slide, you can see that we have added 40 alternative-fuel buses to our fleet, 20 new propane buses, and 20 electric buses that will be arriving soon. A small amount of the CIP funding has supported those large grant projects. Vehicle replacement funding in the CIP is essential to addressing the needs of HCPS's aging working vehicle fleet, which is separate from our buses. Currently, the average age of our 460 vehicles is 15 years old. Just as our need for reliable student transportation, maintaining a dependable fleet of HCPS vehicles is vital to supporting daily operations and ensuring continued service to our schools. In previous years, the CIP request was not approved, as the transportation line item historically included both buses and fleet vehicles. To improve clarity and record-keeping, last year, we established a separate $1.5 million CIP request dedicated solely to vehicle replacement. As we continue to review our fleet inventory, it underscores the continued need for a replacement plan. To continue addressing the aging playgrounds across our elementary schools, this CIP includes a request for $1.6 million. When HCPS first began the playground replacement program, the annual $1 million covered replacements at four elementary schools at approximately $250,000 per school. However, due to inflation and rising material and installation costs, the same amount now covers only three schools, with each playground replacement averaging $305,000. An investment of $1.6 million would allow HCPS to replace playgrounds at five elementary schools each year, keeping the division on schedule with the established 12-year replacement cycle for all 46 elementary schools. As a reminder, per VDOE guidelines, each elementary school has two playgrounds, one designed for students in grades K through 2, and another for grades 3 through 5. For a comprehensive view of the funding and allocation requests, this chart shows each line item we just discussed, and the total request is $33.1 million. This is an $8.1 million increase from the funds allocated through the CIP from FY 26. Again, this increase comes from a focus on addressing critical HVAC needs along with the impacts of inflation. This is an overview of the physical requests related to the upcoming fiscal year's CIP. As a reminder, we keep long-range planning in the mind and leverage third-party, a third-party to assist us in prioritizing projects. You can see that here. Again, there's no funding being considered at this time for any of these projects. And this concludes my presentation. We will be seeking the Board's approval for our preliminary CIP at the November monthly Board meeting. After that, we will provide our proposal to the Board of Supervisors, so it may be considered during their budget deliberations. And once approved by the Supervisors, it will return to this Board for your final approval. And I would like to take this opportunity to express our gratitude to this Board and the Board of Supervisors for your continued support and consideration of our CIP requests. And at this time, I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. And to reiterate what Mr. Pritchard said, as a reminder, Board, we will, at a later meet, take, meeting, take action on this year's CIP, which would be the spending items for FY 2627. The long-range planning is, is for kind of our information, but it's not something that we take action on. Yeah. So, Ms. Consella.
Thank you so much for this presentation. And I echo the sentiments of gratitude to my Board colleagues, Dr. Cashwell, and our counterparts on the Board of Supervisors and the manager. I'm just going to start, even though the capital plan is only one year in time, I'm going to start with our long, I'm going to start with the last slide. So let's go to Slide 15. Last year, this Board was unanimous in its support for the Hermitage High School, actually was moved in this plan, right, to current year. And I realize there is not a current funding source, but in this analysis, are we not trying to identify potential projects for potentially the next bond referendum?
Yes, we are.
And then, I'd like to highlight the, the projects with one asterisk, right, have had independent assessments.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? But Centec and Mosley Architects, and they've looked at what, like mechanical systems, layout flexibility, structural integrity. That's why these projects are here. Am I right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I would just like to thank my colleagues for understanding why projects are on this slide, that it's, a lot of analysis has gone into it. And let me just say, independent analysis. Would that be correct, Mr. Pritchard?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And then I'd also like to highlight, we will have renovated or rebuilt all of our schools that were built prior to 1990 if we stay on track, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll do that by what, 2034, maybe?
32, 33 is the year that Gaten would come up. And then, you know, stretching that over time, when construction would actually begin. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I would just like to, I'm glad to see Hermitage High School on this list, and it has been studied, and it's there for a reason, as well as all of the other projects and the projects that are up to be studied. I'm very excited by the progress we've made as a team. And then I'm going to go to Slide 5, just to highlight what happens. What are the, what's the potential impact, again, Mr. Pritchard, to our schools, students and staff when best practice process isn't followed with the CIP?
Deferred maintenance projects are not done.
What kinds of projects are those?
And those would be any kind, anything from painting, parking lot improvements, bathroom improvements, carpet improvements. I mean, just run-of-the-mill things that have happened that we would do, hopefully, on a year-to-year basis across our 73 schools.
Thank you for highlighting that.
Yes.
And then I'll just go back to Slide 14 and just say thank you so much, and, and thank the Board of Supervisors and, and this entire team for, my golly, can you imagine that we used to do mechanical and roofing, $2.5 million a year for 24 years, that that's all we invested? And I can tell you how much I've heard in my district, and I'm sure my colleagues might could speak the same, as to mechanical, which includes HVAC in their schools. So thank you so much for putting together a $21 million request versus $2.5 million for roofing and mechanical. The Brooklyn, I mean, my schools, my students, teachers in my buildings, families, everyone in the Brooklyn District, honestly, thanks you for this. That's all I have right now, Chair Sheehan.
Thanks, Ms. Consella. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Lenny, for the presentation.
Very welcome.
I know you probably don't like the word HVAC, but I'm going to use it a couple times here today. Can you just briefly, with the $15 million that we're looking at for mechanical now, can you just let us know exactly what this would do for us as far as, I guess, HVAC issues, mechanical, preventative maintenance? Can you just elaborate a little bit more on, you know, I'm loving the $15 million. I think you need more, but can you at least let us know what this $15 million will accomplish?
First, I'd like to go back and say thank you again for this Board, and the Board of Supervisors for the increase that we got this past year. It does make a difference. It makes a huge difference. The amount of repairs that you can make, the proactiveness of looking at your, your systems and making the replacements that need to be replaced based off of age, wear and tear, and things like that that are going to happen. So, it has a lot. It has a lot of weight to make changes and make a difference within the schools.
And it's needed and it's necessary at this point. And does this $15 million potentially cover purchasing some HVAC units just to have in storage for when HVAC units go bad?
That becomes very difficult. If you look, there was a reason why, and I'm glad you asked that question, because these, these pictures were strategically placed this year. It is very difficult, if you go back to some of the mechanical slides, please. So, the top picture is a compressor, which is about three, it could be anywhere between three and a half to four and a half feet tall, weighs anywhere between 600 to 800 pounds. I would literally have a difficulty wrapping my hands around it. What you see at the bottom is a chiller. This is, this is a very common thing that everybody, all of our Board members and everybody gets to hear about is the chiller, chiller, chiller. This is a chiller. This would be very difficult to store. They're also very difficult to get. And when you look at our schools, each school's different. So, when we, when we do this, we have to go out and seek another party to work with the design of creating a chiller that's going to maximize the airflow within a building. But that would be very difficult to store. I'm just being honest.
And if I might, Mr. Young, getting back to, I think, your original question, I do want to acknowledge Susan Moore is with us, and she also loves the eight words HVAC. So, and the, the work the team has done in this, and what would the $15 million do? So, they have already, and always do prioritize, and you may want to add to this, Susan, but a list of proactive maintenance or ongoing maintenance, if you will, the kinds of things you already know you need to do to keep pace. And then there are things that are unexpected repairs, as Mr. Pritchard mentioned, that happen that can cause you to need to expend funds. So, if it's my understanding, this $15 million takes into account the immediate needs that do both of those things, but perhaps you could provide some insight there.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you.
And Susan, I don't want to interrupt you, but also tell us what happens if we don't get this $15 million. I think that would be helpful as well.
So, the $15 million would go towards significant mechanical replacements, cooling towers, chillers, aging chillers. Chillers is a bad word these days as well. It would also cover rooftop units. Rooftop units can range anywhere from a $7,500 to $10,000 replacement, all the way up to tens of thousands, $50,000, $60,000. Your chillers and cooling towers are going to cost us anywhere between $400,000 to $600,000 a unit to replace. We would also cover some of our smaller indoor equipment, water source heat pumps, various pumps that send the wa, the chilled water through the building or the hot water through the building. So there's a lot of components that this $15 million will go towards in keeping our HVA systems healthy and functional. Without the money, we start having breakdowns that become very difficult for us to replace due to funding.
Thank you for that. And I just wanted people who's listening to kind of, you know, get a chance to hear from you all, because we hear it all the time, why can't we just snap our fingers? And there's a process to this, and there's money that's allocated for these projects. So, I'm excited about this. Lenny, thank you so much, Susan as well. Speaking of strategically placed photos, if we can go to Slide 12. Tiffany, I see that van up there, Lenny, as well. That $1.5 million, is that going to cover some of our driver-ed vehicles with this new?
Yes, it would.
It would?
Yes, sir.
And the age of our drivers-ed vehicles are, do we know that?
They're included in this figure.
Okay, they are in there.
Of the non-bus fleet, so you can see the age of this fleet.
Yes.
Okay, so it's included, the drivers-ed vehicles included in it?
Yes, sir.
I believe so, yes.
Awesome. And then, I think I have one more question. Do we know how many middle schools we have in Henrico?
Middle schools, 12.
12. Out of those 12, it's only two schools that don't have an auditorium, Brooklyn Middle School, Fairfield Middle School. I would love to see a plan presented at some point in time on how we can take care of the needs of those students that go to Brooklyn and go to Fairfield. And with that, I yield back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Ms. Atkins?
Yeah, I'm going to echo the same sentiments to your team for all that you do to my colleagues, as well as the Board of Supervisors. I also appreciate the discussion on HVAC. I also wonder if $15 million is enough, and not for response, but I just want to say, is it enough? I'm not saying we're going to be able to achieve getting more, but I also think that it's important that if it's not enough, to state that, so that we are aware. I also have a question around, do we know if, well, has environmental impacts or hazard assessments been done in the past year or so? And how do those shape our CIP priorities? With equipment, the environment can impact how well-run the equipment is, not talking about normal weather, but there are environmental factors that may impact the equipment itself. And I'm wondering, have we done assessments on how the environment in different districts impact equipment?
So, we work with our engineers, our annual contract engineers, to design just about all of our replacements. And part of that design takes into account the environmental factors, the SEER ratings on the units, their efficiency, how well they work. Are we looking at electric? Are we looking at gas? A good example of that would be generators. Many times, we do like to have gas power on our generators, because if we lose electrical power in the building, the generators can run without having to be refueled very quickly with a diesel or gas engine. And of course, the electric is not a possibility with the generators. But with all of our mechanical equipment, we do look at what are those best approaches, and we design to a LEED silver minimum standard. And as you know, with our high schools, as well as our elementary school, we achieved LEED gold. So, part of that LEED rating is to look at those environmental factors, carbon footprint, as well as what kind of fuels we are using to power equipment.
Do we have an understanding of what it will take to get our middle schools with that same type of approach for certification?
As we continue to renovate buildings, we have actually started working with the LEED process in renovations, which was not something we had done previously. So, that LEED process does help us look at the environmental standards. We would look at our middle schools under the renovation in order to take a full and holistic report approach on that process. With our mechanical equipment replacements, we do it in situ of the mechanical equipment, but we do look at those efficiency ratings and how well the equipment can perform individually. Holistically, that would be part of a renovation. Hopefully, I've answered your question.
I think you've tapped into it. It's an interesting discussion, because different buildings, that same equipment can function different in different buildings, depending upon the environment that they are sitting in. And so, environmental factors can impact or may impact performance. And that's leading me to another question. So, when I think about power outages or unfortunate recent water issues, I'm wondering, do we take into consideration what equipment funding or plans in place so that it can minimize closing our schools?
We, we always look at what our best options are. We look at where we can include redundancies in our designs in order to minimize effects. The compressor that Lenny showed you, some of our units have as many as four or six compressors on them. And that is so that they can continue to run if they lose one to two compressors, sometimes even more. I have seen that as well. So, as we continue to design and work with the engineers on these systems, the redundancies are what really help us be preventative in emergency situations and not having to close school systems in the process.
And sometimes we have to close schools. It's the right thing to do for safety reasons. However, I do wonder, you know, how do we approach being futuristic when it comes? We know power outages are going to happen. We hope that there's not a water main break, but it does happen. And if our approach is looking at our equipment and how do we keep our buildings open, I'd love to learn more. And you did tap into it, so I want to give you kudos to that. But I do know it takes a lot more discussion to really talk about that particular topic. Also, I want to ask, now, this is specifically for Rina High School, but any outdoor campuses, when we have weathering such as rain or snow, sometimes rain guards are just not working. I wonder if we've done an assessment on rain guards for our outdoor campuses?
Rain guards in the sense?
So, when it is raining... So when it is raining, is it, that may not be the right word or to describe what I'm talking about, but when it rains, I'm going to say it falls in the gutters, and sometimes the rain just is falling on kids. So I've seen that, and that could be when I saw it, there was a tremendous amount of rain. But it leads me to the question of how often are we assessing them? And secondly, do we feel like that needs to be a part of this plan for replacement or repair?
Right.
Does that make sense? I hope I'm making sense.
It does, yes. And we can certainly look, take a harder look at what options we have for environmental protection, or weather protection is probably a better term in our campus-style schools. The issues that we battle are durability of products, how well they can withstand, and that's from both a weather standpoint as well as a user standpoint. Particularly at our high schools, sometimes our kids love to see, test their vertical jump ability on some of the things that hang about our school campuses. I see a few nods, so I think I, you all know what I'm talking about. But definitely something we can look at. I can tell you, Lee Davis High School did not used to be an enclosed campus-style school. They actually enclosed that down the road, if you remember. That becomes very problematic with the layout of the campus-style schools, as well as the mechanical systems. But it's certainly something we can look at. But we would look at that in relation to, is it more efficient and economical to just rebuild the school than to try and take a campus-style school and turn it into a non-campus style school?
I'm very interested in that. I'm so glad you said that. It tees up a couple other things that I'll address at another time. But I do want to see the results of the assessment, understanding what the costs are and how much time it takes to repair, replace, or if it is as significant as what I'm thinking, it may entertain a whole different type of conversation. So I am interested in that feedback. And I don't know, colleagues, if any of you have, I know you have some outdoor campuses, but have you experienced that? And is it isolated just to Verona High School, that particular outdoor campus?
I can tell you from my experience, certainly, you know, and what students and staff report, you know, they're, the awning design, the covered walkways, all are a little bit different at the different open campuses. And certainly, you know, anything related to leaks, repairs, I know our team is attending to on a regular basis, and the upkeep of those generally. But for, you know, any, I don't know structurally if they're all, I'm sure they're all different in age, they may be different in material type and all of those things, so would be hard to generalize an answer. But I think that's something we can certainly provide you some additional information on.
Thank you.
If I may add, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I was going to say, it's pretty much across the boards that you're going to run into that. It also, it depends on how the school is oriented. Some areas of the school are going to get different situations based on prevailing winds and what those winds are doing with the rain. I can tell you, I'm a product of Chamberlain Elementary, Brooklyn Middle, and Henrico High School. And, and I, I experienced having to battle the weather in all three of those campus-style facilities. I will tell you, I wouldn't trade the experience, I loved going to campus-style schools. But it, it really is, it's a pretty common situation among all of our campus schools. Just depends on the location.
I just want to make sure no one else had any other comments? Did you have comments?
Didn't really have a, yeah, I guess I will have a comment. I know Henrico experiences the same thing as Verona, because it's the stack system where the water drips down in the middle of each stack as you go down the walkway out to, I'm a product of outdoor campuses, so I think that's what Ms. Atkins is alluding to, is maybe that does need to be looked into slightly, right? I mean, I can't put it on her priority list, but I, I know students are getting wet, snowed on, rained on throughout the day as they transition from classes. Due to how it's stacked, I don't think Chamberlain and Brooklyn have the same issue. I think, I feel like it's a different design there, but I do think that Alicia is on to something when it comes to that.
We'll be glad to take a look.
Alicia, can I take, can I take another?
You can.
Because while we're on the outdoor campuses, and it dawned on me, with the new, and I think I spoke about this last time, we are doing our checks, security checks outside. So our staff is now getting wet outside, they're, they're freezing outside in the winter. If there is something we can do to, you know, help them out a little bit, because they're not an indoor campus, everybody else gets to kind of run their systems indoors, out of the elements, whereas our outdoor campuses, which Chamberlain and Henrico and Brooklyn, Fairfield Middle School, I have a lot of in my district, they're asking for some sort of heaters or something that we can provide, an awning maybe, that they aren't getting rained on and, and in the elements as well. So if that's something that we can include somewhere in here, thank you, but if it's something that we need to look at outside of the CIP, I just wanted to bring that out while it was on my mind. Thank you.
I'll work with Mr. Cancela to see what we can do in the meantime, what's the budget, what we can do to help those staff members there at those campus-style schools.
And then I just have two more. One is a question, one is just a statement, probably for discussion at another time. But I would like to better understand air quality monitors for specific schools in the Verona District, specifically because of environmental factors and potential construction. The question that I have, and this is the last one, is do we expect any other anticipated increases for Davis, Long, and Queakason and the living building? As inflation may continue to rise, I am wondering, are we thinking that we need a buffer for those projects we have in place right now, or no?
We have a small buffer, a $4 million buffer, that Dr. Cashwell worked with the Board of Supervisors to prepare. That is in our CIP planning. And we certainly are keeping a close watch on those, those schools. Long and Davis both encountered some bad dirt, as we like to call it, in facilities that had to be taken out and replaced with good dirt. Who knew? Good dirt, bad dirt. But that is something we do run into on these projects. As we continue to monitor the projects and see where we are with various components that we know can, could contribute to a possible unknown, we keep a close watch on that. I think right now, we're doing pretty good on where, with our contingencies that we had built into those projects. That's why those construction contingencies are very important to our projects. So right now, I'm, I'm going to cross my fingers, and I'm going to say that I think we're in pretty good shape, but we will continue to watch that process as our construction continues and gets closer to the building being fully enclosed. Site work is where a big portion of those unknowns can happen, and once you get past that and get the building enclosed, you don't generally run into those more major impacting unknown conditions. So again, we'll continue to watch that, all three of the projects, living building as well, and knowing we have a little bit of that money in reserve. One thing we also do is money that we have not spent on, did not need to spend, is probably a better way for me to say that, on our meals tax project. That money goes back into our reserve account for potential reuse on other capital projects. We work with the county budget department to address any of that addition, not additional, but money that was unspent in those projects as well.
How much money is that?
I will have to get that number for you, I can't tell you that number off the top of my head.
And that number is in addition to the 4 million in?
Yes, ma'am.
In the buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
At what point, if you have to dip into one or the other, what comes first? Is it the meals tax, or is it the money that's buffered, the 4 million?
We would look to that reserve, that $4 million reserve account to begin with. The meals tax is a very fluid process. As we continue to finish projects, close them out, that's when we'll start to pull money out of, what, remaining money out of those accounts. So for these big, major projects we have going on right now, I would say we would look to our $4 million reserve account first, and then look to our, what might be remaining in our meals attacks, meals tax accounts.
Thank you for that. If you get close to tapping into that 4 million, I think that myself and board would want to know, you know, how we're doing and better understand when to tap into the 4 million and when to tap into that meals tax, which is a much more difficult process, I believe, if I'm accurate. I just think that, you know, us getting notification when you get close to that mark is going to be key. And also, you know, when you have an opportunity to share what that dollar amount is, is also important. Thank you again. Chair Shay, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Looking at this year's CIP, I wholeheartedly support the increase to 15 million dollars. I think it's much needed. I mean, not only was it smaller than it needed to be for, for many decades, so that has deferred, deferred issues. COVID had a significant impact on our HVAC systems. We needed to get the kids back in the building, we did, it was the right thing to do, but continuing to flush the systems and put higher filters in has wear and tear on our systems, and we're, we're seeing that on the backend, we're paying that price on the backend, and we need to be able to support it with funding in order to not only do repairs, but hopefully be able to get proactively ahead of things. So 15 million, you need 15 million, to me, sounds great. Simple, simple as that. I think it's a, it's a critical issue for our school division. I do want to look a little bit at the long-range planning. I know quite a few years ago, we had this, and it would be helpful maybe when we do the next iteration with the CIP, just to have a list, a chart of all 74 of our buildings as to the school, when they were built and when they were renovated. I think it's helpful for us as board members and the public to see what has been done and when, and what hasn't been done. I think reality and perception don't always align there. And so having that all in one place, a handful of years ago, maybe five or so years ago, we had that, and I think an updated spreadsheet of that would be super helpful. And then, colleagues, I would like to ask, not in terms of currently bumping anything on the long-range plan, but looking at adding to the capital facility study. I would like to ask that Freeman be part of the capital facility study that is coming up. I can do a hard sell with lots of reasons, if you would like me to. Or y'all can just say, that sounds great, Ms. Shay. But, you know, Freeman was built in 1954, and yes, it, it did have work done on it in 2009 as part of the 2000 bond. That was a $26 million renovation for the entire school. As inflation increased, the scope did not make it across the entire school by the time it was completed. When we talked in the spring with our, with our counterparts of the Board of Supervisors, brought this up, and they were pushing for it to be the next school, our county manager, who had been in the budget office at the time, mentioned it really was a maintenance project, that's $26 million. And again, so I had, was fortunate to be teaching at Freeman during the time and saw that the scope of the project really, it didn't make it to all parts of the building. And so I'm not asking that Freeman make it currently on the long-range plan or bump any other buildings, I'm asking that it be part of the independent study, as Ms. Cancela brought up, by a third, a third party, so they really can be evaluated amongst the other buildings to, you know, see where it falls in terms of priorities and what needs to be done to make sure we have safe, adequate, healthy learning environments for our students. Colleagues, would you be amenable to considering it for the, the study?
For me, I would need additional information. What time period are you thinking? Because we would love to have many have this independent study, but we have a priority, and we also have a process. And I want to better understand, what timeframe were you thinking?
I agree with what Ms. Atkins just said. Unless the team is aware of, or has the building, has Freeman been studied prior? Is there a prior study on which to rely? Or are we aware of any safety factors at Freeman?
There aren't any factors that would cause us to study. It, it has not recently been studied, because you can see, we were going by schools that have yet to be renovated and needed our attention, and then, you know, certainly, as you can see, the way the priority list has played out is not certainly just by age, but by overall condition, as you mentioned. And this batch of schools that has yet to be studied was identified for the next round. You know, certainly, there are a number of schools that have not been studied beyond that, because they would have been more recently renovated.
And we just started doing those studies as part of the 2016, the latter part of the 2016 bond referendum.
It was a newer addition to kind of help, and it's a difficult process, as you're all pointing out, there are schools that have needs, and we have a large number of facilities, and, you know, you can't just line them up by age of facility and say, this is the order we're going to go in, there are lots of other factors to be considered. So that was really the beginning of looking at that, and certainly, the team prioritized them based on generally age and whether or not they'd had any renovations. It certainly wouldn't preclude us from adding something to the study if that was the will of the board, but that's how we arrived here.
Great. Well, colleagues, I'd love to continue that conversation in the coming weeks as we continue to look at, look at the CIP. Thank you.